Good afternoon, everyone. If I could get your attention, I think we are on Channel 11 and we're ready to start the meeting. So, welcome to the Mesa City Council Study Session for the afternoon of the 1st of December. I'll note for the record that all of our council are present. First item on our agenda for this meeting is to review the agenda we have for tonight's council meeting and also the agenda for our meeting next Thursday, December the 8th. So, council, if you could please refer that we'll begin with the discussion about things on the agenda for tonight's meeting. Council, any questions on anything on our agenda tonight? Most of it is on the consent agenda. We are having a public hearing on the rates for utilities, and I know at this point where we are going to vote separately on wastewater. We also off of the agenda have a general plan text amendment item as well. But other than those items, yes, Ms. Spillsbury?
I'm just wondering, I've been meeting with planning and zoning, so I kind of understand the text amendment, so I don't know if anyone's needing a presentation on that or if we're just wanting to move forward. I think we need to decide whether we're going to go with staff recommendations or P&amp;Z recommendations on the text amendment, so that discussion, does that happen here or upstairs?
Either.
Well, we're ready, Mayor, we're ready to present on 7A and items 10 and 11.
All right, thank you, let's do that. So, there's a zoning case that's tied, that is impacted by the text amendment, so why don't we get the presentation on the proposed text amendments and how that would impact the zoning cases that is actually on the agenda for next week? Welcome, Rachel and Mary.
Thank you, Mayor Giles, council members. Today, we want to do a presentation on a staff and city-initiated general plan amendment, and it's to Chapter 7 of the Community Character Specialty Districts and how it's related to the educational campus and the medical campus subtypes. So, Rachel will go through the citywide general plan amendment, and then I've got a couple of slides where I want to talk about how there are two projects that we've been reviewing that are related to this general plan amendment. So, we'll start with Rachel.
All right. Good evening, council. So, just as little background, as we know, our current general plan was adopted in 2014, and as we've had lots of discussions lately, this is our official policy guide for the city that guides physical development. We review these planned policies annually in accordance with state statute, and occasionally we do have recommendations for amendments to the general plan text itself. So, the last time we did this was in 2020 when we amended Chapter 7 and Chapter 16 of the general plan, and at that point, we had added some specifics to the amount of primary and secondary zoning districts that needed to be established in the various character areas, and we also added some different criteria for general plan amendments. So, today, we are recommending a couple of text amendments to Chapter 7, as Mary mentioned, and just to give you an overview of the specialty district in Chapter 7, this is, specialty districts are meant to be for a single use, and we have various subtypes for those. One is the educational campus subtype, medical campus subtype, and the airport subtype. So, we have been evaluating the educational and the medical campus subtypes, and we have identified the need in certain circumstances to have residential uses as a supportive use in those districts. And so, with that, I'll go into the specifics of what we are recommending here, but before I do so, this is an overall map of the city showing where all of our specialty districts are located, and then you can see in the different colors here, we have split out the subtypes. So, the blue is the airport, the educational would be that teal color, and then the medical campus subtype is the purple. So, currently, our educational campus subtype has a list of primary zoning districts and secondary zoning districts, and the majority of the educational campus subtype must be established with primary zoning before secondary can be used. And in this case, that means that the majority is more than 55% of the whole character area has to be established with those primary uses that you see on your screen. Moving on into the medical campus subtype, this is our existing list of primary and secondary zoning districts, but in this case, the general plan has a little bit different requirements, that 80% of the area has to be established with the primary zoning districts before the secondary can be allowed. So, staff is recommending that in the educational campus subtype that we add RM4 and RM5 to the list of secondary zoning districts. This would allow for first kind of some higher density housing for students or for workforce associated with educational campuses and facilities where, you know, we need those supportive uses. The recommendation also is to provide an exception to the timing of when those secondary zoning districts could be utilized. So, currently, as I explained, the majority of the character area has to be established with those primary uses before the secondary would be allowed. So, this would require, this would allow an exception to that where you could establish the secondary uses as long as there was an anchor medical or educational facility established. With this recommendations, we would still be retaining the overall percentages of required primary and zoning districts that are required, but it would just have the exception to the timing of it. So, this went to planning and zoning on November 22nd, and at that time, they had voted 4-3 to adopt staff's recommendation with a condition that we add RM5 as a secondary zoning district to the medical campus subtype, which currently is not recommended by staff. So, staff had evaluated this or considered this with creating our original recommendation and did not think that it was compatible with the medical campus subtype and really the housing needs of those facilities. And I'd also like to mention that we have not really fully been able to consider the citywide implications of that, because this would not affect just one specialty area, it would apply to all of them. Move on to Mary.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mary. Mr. Luna.
Is there a medical facility out on the wings out there that wants to be in this area? I mean, do we know of, has anyone approached the city or anyone else say, hey, we want, we'd like to put our medical facility to support your hospital or whatever? Is there anything like that out on the wings?
Mayor, council member Luna, are you asking if we've been approached by anyone wanting to put housing near a medical?
No, not housing, but supporting medical facility along with the hospital, if you will. So, we're talking about AT stills?
No.
No, but I mean, this is...
That's the challenge here, right? This discussion, I think that's the consideration we want council to think about is there is a specific zoning case in front of us.
Right.
That zoning case can't go forward because it today, the general plan that was voted on by the voters in 2014 is, it doesn't fit, right? It doesn't allow for it. So, the only way for that zoning case to be heard by council is to do a text amendment to the general plan, which can't be only specific to that site, it has to apply across the entire city.
Across the board, yeah.
And so, that relates to the educational campus, correct? The one that specifically, the AT still. P&amp;Z added to that, they picked up the other specialty district of medical, and so, then again, it wouldn't be necessarily one particular zoning case we're talking about right now, but it would be a citywide implication that we, we just haven't had the time to go look and see what that means across the entire city about any campus. And I know there have been, I think Banner had a request to put some residential near one of their areas, I'm not sure of any others that I'm familiar with.
Okay.
Before you proceed, Rachel, did I hear you say that Option 2 would apply to all specialty districts? So, would that also include like the airport specialty district?
Mayor, council, when I said that, I meant, I was trying to explain as Mr. Brady was saying, that it would apply to all the medical campus subtypes and all the educational campus subtypes within the city, not just a specific site.
Okay, so, all medical districts and all educational districts?
Within the subtypes, Rachel, we're only talking about education and medical.
I understand, that's why I'm asking the question. Okay, thank you, please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor, council. So, as Rachel mentioned, we have actually two different planning cases that are pending based on the staff-initiated, the city-initiated general plan amendment. The first is a minor general plan amendment by an applicant asking for the character area designation near AT stills to be changed from medical campus to educational campus subtype. They're looking to modify that designation to allow for an RM5 multiple residence based on the general plan, the minor general plan amendment that city staff has recommended. That minimum density would be 20 dwelling units per acre with a maximum of 43 dwelling units per acre. This pending planning case is contingent on the city council approving the staff-initiated general plan text amendment. If the planning, just a note, if the planning and zoning recommended way forward is adopted by council, then the applicant's minor general plan amendment, the one that we're talking about now, would no longer be needed because that would allow the RM5. Staff didn't support the minor general plan amendment in this case for a couple of reasons. The first is that the proposed character area only includes this 10-acre site, so this 10-acre educational subtype would be surrounded by the medical subtype, this is, this would be the only 10 acres that would be educational. It does not meet the intent of creating an educational campus, in staff's opinion, and the proposed density is not compatible with the surrounding area at this location. Just for the council's information, we wanted to map some projects with similar densities within the city, and as you can see from this map, a lot of them are located in the downtown, in the western part of the city. We do have some in Hawes Crossing, and the ones that are outside of the downtown area generally tend to be in like planned development areas, or they're located near like public transit. So, that, that's why we're starting to see those densities in those areas. So, we just wanted to provide this map as an example. The second planning case that's pending, again, by the same applicant, is a proposed rezoning. So, the current zoning is the BEP, PAD, CUP, so it requires a council use for it.
I know what all of those mean, I just have to tell you. I'm so proud of you.
And the proposed is a RM5 PAD, so this would, again, their proposal for the rezoning would allow for that RM5 density. Again, this is contingent on the city council approving the applicant's minor general plan amendment if the planning and zoning board recommendation is not adopted by council. I know it's confusing, I apologize. It requires an ordinance, so it's on the agenda today for an introduction with city council, it's on the December 8th agenda as a public hearing. Again, staff did not support this hand-in-hand with the minor text amendment, again, because of the land use compatible compatibility and the overall density, there are parking deficiencies, about 21% was requested of the 173 spaces that were required. The building height would be increased, 50 feet would be allowed in the RM5, up to 60 feet, and then with the site design, the lack of connectivity to the AT still in the surrounding area. So, those two planning cases are pending right now based on the outcome of the city council discussion this afternoon.
And Mary, let me just make sure we're clear though, too. While we're, staff is not recommending the RM5 at this location, we would support something else, and what would that be?
Mayor, council, so currently, within the, it would be RM4, so it would be a lower density.
And just to add, Mayor, council, if I could, that is currently allowed in the medical campus subtype.
All right, thank you. Questions, Ms. Spillsbury?
Thank you for the presentation and for all of the meetings that we've had, because this is extremely confusing. I, I'm going to just throw it out there, I like the P&amp;Z recommendation to add RM5 to the medical campus subtype. To me, it makes a lot of sense to have RM5 near a medical campus, just as much as it does near an educational campus. I can see a lot of reasons why that use would be compatible with a medical campus subtype. So, I personally like that recommendation from planning and zoning to just go ahead and add the RM5. That way, we have it, and we can always go less than it, obviously, but then we have it there for any future things as well.
All right, thank you. Mr., yes, Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. On Slide 7, it talks about the alternatives, and when it says add RM4 and 5, who determines that? What, who's going to get RM4 or 5? I mean, do you as planning staff or the developer?
Mayor, council member Freeman, so those would be options, so they would be permissible secondary zoning districts. So, if an applicant came in with a rezone application, it would be found consistent with the general plan in that case. If those were not added, any sort of residential proposal would not be found consistent with the general plan.
Okay.
So, that's why the recommendation is by staff for the first to allow for RM4 and RM5.
Right.
But for the specific zoning case in front of you, what we're saying is we would only really support the RM4, not the higher version of that.
Okay, thank you.
Could you say RM4 is already allowed in some of these?
Mayor and council, council member, so yes, the RM4 is currently a secondary zoning district in the medical campus subtype, which is the, which is the character area subtype for that related case.
Okay. And educational, are they allowed also in the educational subtype or RM4, or is that, is that the question here as well?
That is the proposal here before you used to add the RM4 and RM5, because currently it is not.
It is not, okay.
Mr. Thompson.
Thank you for the presentation. I actually like this concept, I think it allows housing to be built near educational and medical facilities that the students are going to need. You know, you go over to AT still, and kids are, you know, walking to the apartment complexes that are to the west of AT still, and being able to have a housing development or multifamily development nearby, I think makes it easier for the students and for the professionals that were going to be either working in the medical field or working at the educational or attending the educational fields. But I love the concept, I love the fact that we're, you know, we're doing an 80/20 on that because it does keep the characteristics whole, which we are wanting, you know, to make sure that we are keeping a medical complex or medical campus or an educational campus, because what we've seen in the past is, what we saw really with mixed use is when, which is why we went to the 60/40 on the mixed use, was developers coming in seeing mixed use, and in our minds, we were thinking mixed use was primarily a commercial use, but what the developers were seeing was all multifamily. And they would take a mixed use and turn it all into multifamily, and we weren't getting the commercial and the retail that we were looking for, which is why we did the 60/40. So, that 60% was focused towards the retail commercial, the 40% towards the multifamily. And so, I love the concept, I agree with Councilmember Spillsbury, I'm good to move this forward.
I'll weigh in, I also appreciate the compatibility of residential with both educational and medical campuses. I think we saw that at Banner Gateway, where we had some extended stay apartments that came in there, and it's been a blessing for families and staff, and so, clearly, there's it, there, that's a good idea. But I think the point is that under the current, so the question is, you know, Option A or Option B? I'm leaning towards Option A, which is, which is the text amendment that only would add educational campuses, because I think the, as staff pointed out to, and I think, like I said, the rationale for adding it to medical campuses is also evident, but I think we already allow RM4, am I correct? So, the question is, do we up it to this, you know, to the most intense density possible adjacent to medical campuses? Maybe we do, I'm not ruling that out, but I think that we are right now on the cusp of starting our general plan update, right? And so, I think we could say to staff, hey, there's a great idea that's come out of planning and zoning, they've suggested why not increase, allow for increased density of housing adjacent to medical complexes. I know right now, staff is saying, we're not saying that's a bad idea, we're just saying we'd like to think about it, we'd like to look at it because it's a citywide application, we just don't know if there's some bugs that need to be worked out of that idea or not. So, I'm, I think I'm deferential to staff's suggestion that the answer is not no, the answer is thank you, planning and zoning, good idea, let's study that, where in fact, we're starting our general plan update, you know, here in the next few months. So, I'll support either, you know, whatever the preference of the council is, I will vote for this, but I'm going to, my preference would be the staff recommendation of 11A. Mr. Luna.
Real quick, Chris, do we have anything like that in Mesa? So, this would be the only exception in terms of having RM4 and 5 and in, near a medical facility, if you will? We don't, this would be the first?
Yeah, well, so, I think what's the challenge here for this, is a lot of the campuses, when we think about them, they're kind of master-planned and developed out, right? We kind of know what that mix is from the get-go. This one's kind of been taking place piecemeal recently, right? We have this other case where they want to do industrial next to AT still, and there's conflicts with that, and now we've got residential that wants to come in. So, that was not the original belief, right? We thought, we saw this as a larger campus that would have AT still there than that would have these medical offices and clinics surrounding it. So, we're now pivoting to this very different program. Typically, on a medical campus, educational campus, when they come to us, it's kind of laid out, right? It's kind of like, we see what those percentages are, we see how they're going to interface with each other, right? Because the traffic patterns, the, all those things. So, it's hard for us, right now, we're dealing with a very specific case, and it's hard for us to kind of look, look across the entire city, because most of our medical campuses, most of our educational campuses are already established, right? They were built with all of that ratio already known. You know, Banner Desert, they don't have room for anything like this, they don't have room for parking now, I mean, they're struggling with just offices. So, it's trying to imagine where else could this happen, it's, it's hard to say, and I think that's why we're saying we're fine with moving forward with the first, the second would be nice to be part of the general plan update, because we could then run that scenario across the whole city and come back and bring it as part of the general plan update itself.
Right.
I think what's triggering the concern is the RM5. It's not the RM4 for either one of these. It's that going to that highest density that the city allows, and what impact might that have?
I like the notion of having workforce housing by a medical facility, because you could have medical staff, you know, radiation and radiation personnel living near there, and having this change would be advantageous, I would think, so. The question is, should it be RM4 or 5?
4 is already allowed.
4 is allowed, so.
Should we go up to 5?
Should we go to 5?
Julie.
I would also just make the point in, to defend my, my vote, this bullet that's right here on the screen could provide, so this is the case for why we should add this to the educational campus, could provide nearby housing for students, teachers, and other workforce housing needs on, near campus, could be a compatible use and demonstrate community need in some areas. To me, that fits exactly with medical as well, and I haven't heard any good arguments or reasons or even possible scenarios of implications that could be detrimental to the city. And looking at the map where the medical campuses are, to Chris's point, he just said there's, most of the medical campuses are already built out, so I just am not seeing severe implications to this, and so, to me, it's just clearer and easier, as, as was mentioned in P&amp;Z, which I appreciate their input as well, that, which, that was a 4-3 vote, this is, this isn't a clear answer on this. But I, I just feel like this, for the exact reasons that our staff is recommending the educational campus could also be said for medical. And I would also just make the point, if you look at the map on Slide 4, nope, not that one, the other map you showed us, where was that one? That has the RM5 currently? Okay, so, Slide 10, if you look, so it shows a red square where the proposed project is, and you look down that Superstition Freeway Corridor, there are several RM5s, so the argument that it's only in downtown doesn't really fit with the map as well. So, I, there are RM5 currently along the freeway corridor, and I think this fits right there.
Can I just be clear, RM4 is allowed in medical?
Right.
Okay, so that, so it's just going to RM5 for medical?
Going to RM5, so.
It's not allowed in educational, and that's why, so there's, it's, they're not, they're not parallel, the education has, doesn't have any, so we're recommending RM4 and RM5. Medical does allow, if it was medical and someone came in RM4, they would be able to go in without having to get an amendment.
But my point is just that staff is recommending RM4, RM5 to the educational, and even though RM4 is already included in medical, that's why I'm justifying adding RM5 to medical as well.
Good point, and I mean, the zoning case might be an example of that, that the zoning case is coming in with RM5, which again, could be allowed depending on how the text amendment goes, but staff is recommending denial, saying, yes, you can ask for RM5, but you have parking issues, you have traffic issues, you know, for other reasons related to the merits of your case, we're recommending denial, even though it's allowed, right? So, it, no one is entitled to RM5, even if we do these text amendments.
You still have to come in.
You still have to come in, and based on the merits of your case, staff will say this, this is a worthy RM5 project or not, right? That's why frankly, I'll vote for either, yes, for either one of these. I'm just saying, upstairs, we need to decide which one of these proposals we're going, which motion we're going to make, right?
So, one of us just? One of us would just make a motion, or do we decide which motion we want right now?
Well, I don't, would it be, I'd kind of like to do a straw poll now to see which one of these do we think we have support for?
Mayor, do you want to wait until after the public hearing in case someone?
Absolutely, I mean, it's not like we want to convict somebody before the trial, right? So, this is all contingent on our minds being completely changed by the public hearing upstairs.
Right.
Right, so, you're right, why don't we do that? But I have expressed my initial preference for Option A, but I will support either, and I guess we'll just upstairs decide whether we're going to make a motion for A or B.
Okay.
And Councilmember Spillsbury and others have expressed a preference already for B, which is great. All right, any, thank you, ladies, any other questions on the text amendment or anything related to that? All right, thank you. Mr. Brady, is there anything else on tonight's agenda that staff would like to give us any additional information?
I think, Mayor, we covered a lot of those conversations about the public safety facility the last time we were here, so you have the Falkiville Land Use Compatibility Study on here that we've had a presentation on, the outdoor eating areas exceptions, we've covered all those, so I don't know that we need to present those again.
All right, thank you. Yes, Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. So, on 8C, there was a blue card going to be turned in, I talked to the, that person, and we're going to work with him, with my office, so it's going to remain on consent agenda, just wanted to make that known, okay?
All right, so he had indicated he was going to call in, and so, if he does call in, will you let us know? Because it sounds like he's, at least to Mr. Freeman, that he's changed his mind.
Right, we'll look for him.
Okay, thank you very much. Counsel, we still have to talk about next week's meeting, but is there anything else on tonight's meeting? All right, thank you, let's look at next week's agenda then. Anything, any initial questions about next week's agenda?
I guess I would just ask, with the project we were just talking about, would we, do we want to have a presentation on that project next week during the study session, or do we want to do that today? I don't know what makes the most sense or what you're planning on, or would we just not, if it stays on consent?
It looks like the text amendment is going to pass, and so, I think that, that case will be ripe to be heard next week. So, you're right, the question is, do we want to hear a presentation on the merits of that zoning case? I would suggest maybe we wait till next week.
It's just been introduced tonight.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it, either way, all right. Counsel, any other questions on, on January, I'm sorry, December the 8th council meeting? Mr., I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's a minor question, I really don't understand, on 4I, is it, why do we have a TBD on the construction figures for?
Oh, you may have, we have a presentation for that, but on the number, maybe you just have an older agenda.
Maybe it's not updating.
It's 1.4, it's 1.4 million for the GM. It's 1.4, it's 1.4 million for the GMP and 7% allowance of 98,000. So it's 1,498.
I think 4I is the Mesa City Hall project.
Yeah.
Is that what you're asking about?
Okay, I'm sorry. Sometimes when I bookmark it.
Okay. Oh, that probably freezes it.
It freezes it, and then when it gets updated, I don't catch it. Thank you.
So, yeah, this is just the first C Mar. And this, so this is, the amount is 1.4 million for the GMP and a 7% change order allowance, change order allowance of 98,000 for a total of 1.4 million 98. And while we, on that topic, let me just quickly show counsel a little bit of the updated timeframe on this one. One of the reasons that we're bringing this fairly smaller item to counsel is because of lead times on different materials that we need to order now in order to get them here during the time we need the project to move forward. Because of the delays or the lead times for the outside terracotta, some of the metals, some of the electrical equipment, you'll hear switch gears talked about all the time, we need to do this action today. But it's also good to push back that we can't, the schedule of getting a contractor on board doesn't make sense to bring them on till almost, what are we saying, March timeframe, which will allow us to then hit a deadline of September, end of September of 2024. So we're, that's just an updated, so the demolition that we were hoping to start on New Year's Eve is not gonna happen until March because otherwise we'd have a contractor sitting around waiting for these supplies. So we've pushed that start date. There'll be some investigative potholing and doing some items around the building, but the larger demolition will start till this spring. But we need this item so we can order those items and have them in place so that when the contractor starts moving forward, those items will arrive.
Chris, what was the total cost on that? I forgot.
We are waiting for the final number. I want to say we're hovering around about, I think, the same number we gave to council, a little over $30 million. But I caution, because I'm still, we're still waiting to get those final numbers from the contractor. Again, starting in 20, spring of 2023 and completion at end of September 1st of October of 2024.
Mr. Brady, is there anything on next week's agenda?
Yeah, so there's a few items, Mayor. Let's go to 5A, the Fifth Amendment to the Mesa Proving Grounds Development Agreement. We probably ought to give a, you would like to hear a presentation on that one. And then we have a couple others.
Mayor, Council, I'm here with Andrea Moore, Parks and Recreation Director, to present on this item. So what are you, what are you looking at? This is the Eastmark Community Plan that was approved several years ago. And as part of the approval, there was a several parks and open space areas that was approved as part of the community plan. But there was a specific requirement to create a great park. And with a great park, it was required to have 106 acres that it was supposed to be preserved and devolved as a great park. As part of the 106, the developer was responsible for devolving 90 acres. And the city was also required or responsible to purchase 16 acres out of the 106 to be devolved as a city recreation facilities. It's very important to note that as part of the requirement for the city to purchase the 16 acres, there was no set date for the city to purchase that land. And with the development of the great park, the community plan required the developer to coordinate with the city to develop the details and programming of the park because the original community plan was more of a concept. And it was believed that as actual development happened, there will be adjustment and a few modifications as well. So what we have to present to you now, as you know, Eastmark is almost built out. So now we have a whole specific outline of the great park. Majority, majority of this park has already, has already been devolved. And the 16 acres of land that was required to be devolved by the city, this is what you're looking at. Right now, we've identified a specific site that is going to be devolved for the 16 acres. In addition to that, the developer is also dedicating, I think, 8.7 acres as well for, to be devolved for the city recreation facility as well. One of the important requirement of the great park was, was for it to be contiguous. And so if you look, this is really making sure that it's, it's very contiguous to each other, there's no break as well. So overall, if you look at what, what is shown, it's actually 114 acres. That is what is being devolved as a great park compared to the 106 that was required.
So you're looking. Can you go through those numbers again? I thought you said there was 116 was the initial.
106.
106. Now we're up 114.
We are, that's correct.
Okay.
Because of additional areas that is being brought into the original design. So one of the amenities or one of the parks that is being brought to be contiguous to the great park and become part of the great park is the golf course and the skate park that you're looking at right now. The skate park is 3.4 acres, which is now going to be part of the great park. And then you're looking at the 21.52 acre, this golf as well, which has already been constructed to really be incorporated. And it's very important to know that this will be open to the public, the public can use this facility. However, the maintenance and the property that will be owned by the developer or the community, actually the community alliance. So they will own and maintain the skate park and this golf. And then you're looking at the 16 acres, which is now being basically expedited because the developer, as part of this amendment, if it's approved, the developer has agreed to devolve this park within three years of approval of this fair amendment, which in a way, it's going to expedite the development. Because as I said earlier on, there was no timeline for constructing the 16 acres on when the city was supposed to purchase that as well. This 16 acres will be owned and maintained by the city, which is different from the skate park and this golf. So this is another 8.7 acres that is being added to the city 16 acres dedicated land area that will be devolved in with recreational facilities as well. They'll be working with the city to come up with programming and the specific details as well. What you're looking at is a pedestrian connection that connects, this is the piece that you're looking at, that is well designed to connect the other section of the great park to make sure that it's contiguous. The final map that you're looking at, so you're looking at the whole Eastmark community and all the parks that have been devolved. The community plan envisaged or anticipated that there will be about 200 acres of green spaces. The information that I have from the developer right now, they have about 416 green spaces or parks in the whole area as well. The developer also held a citizen participation or basically a neighborhood meeting to inform and disguise the changes with the residents on May 24th. And as part of the discussion, things that came up was amenities in the development going to be diminished. Are they doing, are they reducing the size of the great park? And they informed them they actually not reducing it. It was required to be 106 degrees. And then they disguise a responsibility for maintenance of various parks in the division. And then also, there were a few questions that they followed up with emails to really clarify or specify questions that were not answered. So overall, staff believe that they intend to devolve 160 acres of the community plan to be for the great park has been met with a new proposal that we showed you. And the green space areas have been met within the Eastmark community. So staff is recommending approval of the development agreement. I will also want to add that there is an easement agreement as well that is part of this development that will give public easement to the skate park and the golf course as well. And we will sound for any questions.
Thank you, Nana. Mr. Thompson.
Now, I just want to make sure that through the development or through the agreement, this Fifth Amendment, we are still meeting all intents of the original development agreement, correct? And all the agreements that we've had in place, I guess, with Eastmark since day one. Is that correct as well, Jim?
Mayor, Council, so let me, I'll give you an, I'll answer, the short answer is yes. And I'll give you specifics. So the original agreement and is, and Nana said it, it's 106 acres for the great, our great park through this agreement, it'll be 114. It was supposed to be, the city was supposed to purchase 16 acres. Instead, the developer is giving, donating to the city 24.7 acres. So the park is larger and the portion that the city's is larger.
And we didn't have to pay for it.
Right. I was gonna say, and in reality, the park, the additional, now I guess 24 acres would be built probably quicker than it would have been if the city were to, because we would have to bond, obviously, right? To build any additional park space. So at the end of the day, the community ends up winning because not only do they get more acreage, park space, but they also get it in a more timely manner.
Yeah, Counsel, that's correct.
All right. Thank you. So this is on the agenda for next Thursday.
For the 8th.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions on, yes, Ms. Spillsbury?
I just remembered the point, the question I wanted to ask. For tonight, because it's an introduction on the zoning case, the, it's a recommendation for denial. So if it's an introduction and it's on the consent agenda, are we just voting that it's an introduction? We're not voting that we are saying it should be a denial?
That's a, that's a good point. It's on the consent agenda, item 7A.
Right.
But the recommendation from P&amp;Z was I.
So, so for everybody, just so that's not, we're going back to the previous.
Right. We're on tonight's agenda.
Yeah, sorry. I thought.
So jumping back to 7A, just for people that didn't, I know where you were going.
Okay.
Just for other people who didn't, you know.
Okay, sorry.
So it's just for introduction, so you're not voting on the merits. And so the staying on consent agenda is for it to be introduced. You're not making a decision on the merits. When it comes back on the 8th, normally what we do is we'll put in bold and all caps, whether it's to approve or to deny. Because of the nature of that case, I suspect we'll just pull it off the consent. And so we'll save the need for the bold and all caps.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, and I forgot to ask that previously, so thank you.
Good question. Okay, going back to a week from today's meeting.
Yes.
Mr. Brady, anything else you'd like to talk about?
One more on this.
Okay, on the 8th, sorry.
But, oh, did you want to?
No, yeah, I was just saying I shouldn't have jumped back to the first yet.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Item 11A is our comprehensive financial report.
Mayor, if I could first with Irma. You know, I had a meeting with Irma and Mike regarding this, and I just want to thank staff. I mean, we have an unmodified report that I thought, unmodified, what does that mean? She means we're perfect, 10 out of 10. So I appreciate that. Staff and our auditing is just really perfect. And with that, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to do a short presentation on the overview, the results of our audit this year. So we have an unmodified report, which means we have a clean opinion, which means everything's good. There were no material findings. There was some recommendations that the auditors had that we implemented, but there was no material findings. Our annual comprehensive financial report follows generally accepted accounting principles and follows all the applicable government accounting standards. All right, some highlights of our financial status as of June 30th of 2022. The city's revenues increased by $102 million compared to fiscal year '21. The majority of that increase, or the revenues, were in the governmental activities. The sales tax and federal funds that we received contributed to that. There's a slide that follows this that kind of breaks down the governmental revenues a little bit more. But you can see the growth that we've had in the last three years in our city's revenues. Specifically.
We might want to say that that's come from a lot of federal funds that have come to the city.
Yes.
So I just want to make sure everybody doesn't get real excited about.
Well, the first item on this chart is taxes. That's the city's sales tax and property tax. And that is the biggest contributor to our city's revenues. And they've gone up considerably. The program revenues, I'll jump to the very right, that's where all those federal dollars are coming in. All the ARPA, all the ERAP money, even CARES money is on all three of those years. The program revenues would have been a lot smaller in the last three years had we not received all the federal funds, kind of going along with what Mr. Brady just said. The unrestricted intergovernmental revenues kind of stabilized a little bit in '21, '22. That's where we have all our state shared revenues. It's a state shared sales tax, state shared income tax, and our HERF revenues is our unrestricted intergovernmental revenues. And then the transfers are the transfer from the utility fund into our general fund. You see the decrease between '20 and '21. That was when the ordinance went into place. That has a formula of how we calculate the transfer from utility to the general fund. And the, the numbers are pretty comparable, '21 and '22.
So that's a remarkable trend. In the past, that was an escalating number. Now with that policy, we've leveled that out, made it more certain, more predictable. So that's what that ordinance, the effect of that ordinance has.
The city's total assets increased to $5.2 billion. It was about $4.9 billion last year. The largest portion of our assets are the capital assets, which is the, the green color. It's all our buildings, all our infrastructure, water treatment plants, everything that the city owns, all the assets. The next large item of our assets is the cash and investments, which is the light blue teal color there. And that has increased as well the last couple of years. And then the middle section, the other assets, the biggest portion in there is our investments and joint ventures. The city participates in joint ventures like Greenfield Water Treatment Plant and VEMRI. And so that's our share of those joint ventures that holds into there. Snapshot of our investments at June 30th of 2022. 62 million cash at the bank. We had 20 million invested in the local government investment pool, which is the state LGIP. And 133 million with trustee and fiscal agents. The majority of that's with the fiscal agents. That's the money that we provide to our fiscal agent to make our July 1st debt service payment. So we provided to them at the end of June, and they make the payment in July. The 18 million that we have cash with custodian, that's money that we have aside accessible for our treasurer to be able to invest anytime good opportunities come up, that he's able to have the, the funds available to do the investing. And then the long-term investments are the $1.1 billion. That's a combination of what our third party invests in the corporate bonds and also what our treasurer invests in. And we call them long-term investments because they're about one to five-year maturities, but they're liquid. If we needed to, we could sell any of the, the assets and be able to get the money if we needed to. And as Mike would have me remind you is, this is not free money. Most of this has already been spoken for. Total liabilities were $4.2 billion. The biggest portion of our city's liabilities are the long-term obligations. That's our bonds outstanding, whether it be the geo bonds, whether they be the revenue bonds. And then our pension and OPEB liabilities. OPEB is other post-employment benefits, the benefits that we provide to employees when they retire. So the next two slides will kind of detail a little bit on each of those two liabilities. So long-term obligations, an overall decreased in current year compared to '21. Our general obligation bonds, which are paid for by the secondary property tax, decreased. Our highway user revenue bonds also decreased. Those are paid for from the HERF revenues that we get. The utility revenue bonds decreased slightly mainly because we switched in methodologies and we're issuing revenue obligations instead. So you can see the increase in the revenue obligations. And then the excise tax obligations also decreased. And the excise tax obligations are related to the ASU building. And then our pension and OPEB unfunded liability. Our pension liability has actually decreased compared to prior year. The reason is when our actuaries look at measuring the liability, they look at a year ago to measure that liability. And they take the assumptions out of a year ago. A year ago, the investment market was better. And so there were increases in investments in these plans, which means our unfunded liability decreased. So you're seeing that with ASRS pension, the PSPRS fire and police pension, and even the police OPEB. The way the market is right now, if we do the valuation next year, I wouldn't be surprised that those numbers would go up. The city OPEB plan, the liability increased again. With all of these, there's a lot of assumptions that the actuaries take into account, how long people live, the cost of healthcare, and that kind of thing. people live, the cost of healthcare, and that kind of thing. So that kind of contributes to the, the increase that we saw this year in the city's OPEB plan. And with that, if you have any questions?
Thank you, Irma. Counsel, questions on our financial statement? All right. So this is off of the consent agenda for our meeting next Thursday.
There'll be, it's required for a presentation, the city auditor. Sandy will be here to make a, what, we, right?
Yes.
We hope. So, I don't know. We're hoping.
It's part of the requirement.
Well, no, it's part of the requirement. We just don't know whether, are we going to be ready? Have they finished their review?
It's still with the second partner.
Okay. So we're hoping to have this presented to you next week. We'll see. If not, we have to present it to you. We just don't know whether the firm's going to be ready. So.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Brady, anything else on next week's agenda you'd like to?
Not on the agenda. We do have two presentations on the study session.
Great. All right. Counsel, anything else on tonight or next week's council meeting? If not, the next item on our agenda for this meeting, item 2A, is a presentation and to provide direction about the potential acquisition of the Grand Hotel with federal funds as part of the city's Off the Streets program, which provides temporary housing and services for people experiencing homelessness. Lindsay, Lisa, good to have you with us.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Lindsay Belinky with the Community Services Department. And with me today is Lisa Davis from our Real Estate Services Department. And we also have a lot of key staff that contribute to this work and the audience with us today. So we are here to, to provide an update on the hotel purchase for the Off the Streets program, which contributes to the long-term solution for our program. As a reminder, this Off the Streets program is part of our Housing Path to Recovery, which is our core strategy in addressing homelessness for the city. The Off the Streets program is really considered an entry point for those experiencing homelessness. It provides a temporary housing place for people to go, to get off the streets, out of our parks, out of places that are not habitable, and really into services and into creating a housing plan and long-term stability. So as we look to assess, as we assess the future of Off the Streets, we are considering purchasing a hotel and having our own property for this program, rather than continuing to rent rooms at a hotel locally. For the long term, we feel a purchase is a wise strategy because we have seen great success in the Off the Streets program thus far and continue to really enhance our partnership with Community Bridges, who is our partner in running and operating the facility, running the program. The location is also in the East Mesa area, and so it allows us to continue to spread services citywide. It also allows us to enforce urban camping laws. And we also believe owning a property really helps us to control decisions for the future of the program and focus on Mesa-based clients, as well as control future decisions. If we were ever to determine this is no longer a need or a council priority, we could control the property, sell it, or lease it for other purposes. And it allows us to control costs. We are seeing leasing costs rising and fluctuating across the region. And so this really allows us to control that and make good use of our federal funds, ARPA dollars that are, we have a limited time to use, and utilize those to invest in capital for a long-term solution for this program.
The hotel that we're looking for, looking at right now is the Grand Hotel at 6733 East Main Street, which is just west of Power Road on the south side of Main Street. There are two buildings on the site. One was built in 1973. It's a single-story building. There's a two-story building on the site that was built in 1985. This area of the city was annexed into the city in 1975, or '74, which was just a year after that first building was constructed. There are 70 rooms with laundry and an office there on site. The proximity to commercial retail jobs, as well as to public transit, makes a good site to look at for this type of program. In talking to the property owner, he indicated that they have a new AC units and potentially a new water heater and AC, or I'm sorry, and a, I'm sorry, the water heater and the roof. But we have not evaluated the building. We haven't gone in and done any evaluations of either one of the buildings. It's been looked at as far as a single-story building to be potentially used as the transitional portion of the program, which would be folks that are coming into the program, they could be transitioned into the program, maybe using the single-story building to do that. And as Lindsay mentioned, we're planning to use federal dollars for this. We need to follow those federal guidelines to use that money. Currently, we have ordered an appraisal, and that'll be back on December 15. And then from there, we have to do a review appraisal, which takes two to three weeks. And since we're in the holiday season, more than likely, it's going to take that three weeks, right? So, next slide. The area, again, showing an aerial of where the Grand Hotel is located. Of course, there's Power Road and Main Street. Does have commercial adjacent to the property, as well as on the north side of Main Street. And there is a commercial retail center on that southeast corner. There is residential to the south of it, which is RS6 primarily. There is a little bit of multifamily in there. And then further south, of course, is the medical center. With that, that's my portion of the presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Lindsay and Lisa. Counsel? Mr. Luna?
So it's, we're still on the infancy. We don't know whether there are restrictions or not in terms of, it has to be specifically used for a hotel, like, like the previous property that we're looking at, right? And we won't know that until you go through all that process. Is that correct?
We're currently in, looking at that, there was, there was nothing that came up in the title report, similar to the one that was on the Superstition Springs site. So there wasn't anything that popped up like that.
Okay.
But Mayor and Council, we will still have to come, if we're decided to pursue this, we will have to come and get a council use permit for such social services or social services?
Yes, social service facility.
Yeah, so, so that process will still have to take place.
Yes.
And we'll have Community Bridges continue doing the wraparound services?
That's right.
Okay, great.
Mayor and Council, we're just here to kind of get, continue to get direction as we move forward, because we'll obviously be spending some funding. We're doing a lot of analysis. But it's, we want to just make sure you're aware that we're spending some time on this property before we kind of come back and decide whether it's feasible or not, just from, you know, the facility standpoint. And obviously, we'll have to have discussions about community engagement, and then ultimately going through the CEP process.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I've always been supportive of this. I think it's important that as a city, we own our own buildings and not lease them. The thing, your first slide, your slide nine says, being a good neighbor. Being a good neighbor, are we going to, am I too far in front of you with this comment?
You can ask your question.
Okay, thank you. Should we reach out beforehand and see what type of input we might receive from adjoining neighbors or businesses?
I think there's a time for that. We wanted to see if this facility.
So we're doing our due diligence.
Yeah, we need to at least kick the tires a little bit.
Okay.
Yes. And then before proposing a purchase, we do, we will begin community meetings, do outreach, show this good neighbor policy draft that we have created based on how we run the program and how we want to show up in the neighborhood and allow for comments and, and input at that time as well.
Yeah. And I think we have a great template where we're already at, at 5200 East Main, so we can show there how good we're doing. So, okay, with that, I've been supportive of this, so I'll continue doing that.
Thank you. Ms. Spillsbury, and then Mr.?
Yeah, I was just going to make the point that, looking at the map, this is about a mile and a half east of where it currently is, which is still in my district. And it's been a great success in my district. We haven't had any problems. And the neighborhood loves the 24-hour police presence. And so I will also be in support of moving forward to, hopefully this one will work out, right? So I, I express my support.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I have a few questions. You said on the single story, perhaps they would be used for transitional. How many units are there on the single story? And if you don't know, it's not a big deal. It's not a major thing.
I believe it's 10 units on the single story.
Okay. And a little bit of a deficit. I think the place we're using now is around 85 rooms, and this is 70. So a little bit of, but, you know, the growing, you know, growing homelessness, unfortunately. Is there any possibility that we could keep some rooms where we are and get this, you know, just for additional capacity?
So our goal is to move the Off the Streets program to the Grand Hotel if, if this location works out. We are considering using space at the Wind and Mirror Hotel for, for other similar types of service, not for this program specifically, but for a temporary transitional.
Okay.
But to your point, we have to have rooms available.
Yes.
So I'll just kind of just say, if this is at capacity, we have to find other rooms for even Off the Streets. So to your point, I think we're going to have to manage that, right? We would like to transition all the Off the Streets to one location.
Yeah.
But if we, if we're out of capacity, we're going to have to go find, we may have to continue that relationship that we have at the Wind and Mirror for this same program.
I believe we're at capacity at the Wind and Mirror right now.
There are times when we are, I believe that's correct.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Yeah, Mayor and Council members, we do have full capacity most days at that location. We also have the dust-on room, which is the congregate space where we have about 15 cots that are more temporary, just for a night or two, as people come into a safe place. And then we triage services and help get people, if we don't have space at the hotel, or if they're a better fit at another location, we'll send them to other locations around the, the city or the valley.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments on this, Counsel? Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, I'm, I don't know why. I, I guess I'm just the opposite of Councilmember Freeman. I love the program. I love the concept. I don't know why we want to own a building. It hasn't worked in any community that it's, that have bought a building. There's ongoing O&M costs into the future. I mean, I remember when I first got elected to City Council, we couldn't even build new parks because our general fund was depleted so much. So what's going to happen? All of a sudden, we have a dilapidated hotel in 10 years. We see a decline in our general fund. How are we going to pay for O&M? Are we going to start shutting down parks and eliminating other things out of our general fund to pay for this? I would rather see CDBG dollars shifted over and allow, you know, Community Bridges or somebody of that nature buy it and not the city. The city shouldn't be owning a hotel or a homeless hotel. It shouldn't be our property. I mean, we're, we're good at parks. We're good at libraries. We shouldn't be owning hotels. That's, I think that's outside the purview of, of our city and our charter. So I, you know, I, I support the program. I just, I don't think we should own the building.
All right. Well, I think that the, this is on the agenda just for a, an indication of-
Get some direction, make sure. As we're moving forward, I don't want to say, we never told us about it and we didn't like it. So.
Yeah, I, I too am supportive. I think we all, I'm familiar with the Boise decision and the fact that we can't enforce urban camping or trespass laws unless we have emergency shelter. So the alternative to not having this is not being able to enforce those laws in, in our parks and in our alleyways. So I think this is, long-term, the most effective and most affordable solution for the city to understand that we are going to be in that business for the foreseeable future. I guess if, one of the critiques is, well, geez, this is only 70 rooms right now. We're using 80, 90 rooms. I think it's, it's okay. I mean, the, the point of this is, that Lindsay began with, is this allows us to spread city services throughout the city. And so what we don't want is to, to copy the downtown Phoenix model, where you just have an entire block that is taken over by homeless services. So I think, you know, having 70 rooms here, and if we max out this capacity, we'll, we'll figure something else out. There, there's going to be other locations, maybe in a different part of the city, so that we don't have to concentrate all of the services in one particular neighborhood, one particular part of town. So I, I'm, I'm supportive of going forward. Ms. Spillsbury?
I was just going to ask too, can we, can we see like numbers on this then, when you come back? Like how much it costs to rent all these rooms, and how much it costs to buy it, and cost savings, and, I mean, that kind of stuff? Can you bring that back? Or is that?
Sure. No, we, we can. I think we're in a unique opportunity moment, right, where we have federal funds that are specifically allows for us to-
Right.
-do these purposes. A lot of cities are doing the same thing. And so the way I look at it, this is a 50-year opportunity versus every year trying to find lease dollars, operational dollars.
Right. So long-term, it would be very beneficial to us.
I mean, I think, to be honest, I think we're going to be doing both.
Okay.
I think we're going to own the hotel, and I suspect we're probably going to be leasing some others. But that gives us the flexibility to expand the program and when we need it to. And otherwise, I mean, this is just unique. We wouldn't, obviously, you know, it's, with the resources we have from federal funds and, and general fund, we, this is not, we probably wouldn't be on our list of projects, right? But for the fact that we have a significant amount of revenue, or available revenues for these purposes, we're trying to take advantage of it.
And so I guess to Kevin's point, is, I mean, we can only use these federal dollars for, for the city to purchase it? Or could we use these federal dollars for a nonprofit to purchase it and run it?
I'm sure that we could, I don't know if we could convey title to them early on. I don't think, that's been the program, but.
We'd have to look at it again. As I remember it, I think we need to own it. And then we can have, but we can have a third-party management.
I mean, it'd be worth looking at. But I mean, like, if, like, so we wouldn't maybe spend city money to do this. But because we have the federal dollars, then maybe that's why we're justifying doing it or something. But we should look into it and make sure that we can't do that with this, with these dollars.
Mr. Luna?
And we've done that with the-
Right, right.
You know, we, with CDBG dollars, you know, it was city property. They ran it. And then we eventually passed the title.
That's what I was thinking about.
So, I mean, that's-
Well, essentially, that's what this program, I mean, if you go out to Wind and Mirror, it's not the city of Mesa, it's the police office.
It's Community Bridges, yeah.
It's the bridges. So we're doing it as a partnership with them.
So I'm definitely in support of this. I think it's a great-
It's not going to be city staff operating the-
But let's just make sure, if that's an option or not, if we can do that, that would, I'd feel better about that.
Yeah.
Well, we can look at the option. I, I think the recommendation would be for us to purchase it. There's so many audit requirements in at least the first five years that I don't want to hand this over to somebody else. And then they're not going to go get them. They're going to come after us. We've already got one project on Main Street, close in the downtown, where we've already in the hole for a lot of money because, you know, the performance, the nonprofit, didn't happen. And so now the city's on the hook, not them.
Yeah, I think, just to underscore what, I mean, the, maybe long-term, we don't own it. But I think we go through the process now of jumping through the, the federal hoops to get it done. And if the auditor and others going forward say, you know what, it, it's more expensive for the city to own this than it is for us to hand the keys to someone else, then we have, we have the flexibility to do that. Mr. Freeman?
Yeah. So the question was asked, CDBG dollars, can they be allocated towards the O&M of this instead of the general fund dollars? Do we have an answer to that?
I guess we could look at it.
Well, I mean, once we buy it, we're going to do some TI work on it, I'm sure, to rehab it to, to operational. And then after that, we'll have ownership, I suppose, if it all plays out. And then walk us through some of the dollar components there.
Yeah. Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, yes, we can use some CDBG dollars for this purpose. If you remember, there's different buckets within CDBGs. So this would be under that public service bucket, which is fairly limited.
It's capped, it's the percentage of the total.
It's capped to 15% at this point by the federal government. So, so that would be something we'd have to look at. If there are other types of capital improvements that we have to make, we have home dollars. We also have the emergency services grant dollars that are specifically meant for operations and for homeless services. So we do have some categories of funding that can be used for this program, and the O&M, to your point.
So I think to Kevin's point, so thank you for pointing that out, that the less general fund dollars that we can use to fund this program, that's what, that should be our objective.
We'll be there. Absolutely, we'll be there. But the, on the other side of, the flip side of it is, you have to have these rooms, or it will impact the general fund side because your operations.
And I like Kevin slapping me around once in a while.
All right.
We have one more item.
We've got a full agenda, so we're going to keep-
One more item.
Yes, yes, I know. Okay. Thank you very much, ladies. I think you, you got the consensus was to proceed.
Thank you.
Item 2B is a presentation and to discuss the existing recycling program in Mesa, as well as future recycling opportunities, including Mesa's joint efforts with the Town of Gilbert and various associated agreements. Welcome. It's on your agenda.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Sherry Collins, and I'm the Solid Waste Director. And with me I have Lauren Whitaker, and she's the interim deputy director for Solid Waste. So I'm happy to be here tonight to give you an update on recycling. And then I also want to remind you that the contracts for this will be coming to you, coming back to you on December 8. So our current state of recycling, we have one vendor for recycling. And we're currently recycling around one-third of the tons that we- for recycling, and we're currently recycling around 1/3 of the tons that we collect. This contract is up at the end of this year, and we have no further renewal options. The Town of Gilbert was in the same position with the contract, with the same vendor, and no renewal options either. So, since Gilbert was in the same position, we partnered with the Town of Gilbert this year, and we sent out an RFP for recycling service in August of 2022. We received four responses, and we selected two vendors from those responses. So, the results of this is that we have two options and two solutions. One is short-term, and one is long-term. So, ultimately, we have one long-term solution. Our short-term solution is with United Fibers, which is our current vendor, and they've agreed to an initial four-month agreement with one-month extensions. United Fibers has made a business decision not to remain in the commingled recycling business, and so, we've had a really good business partnership with them over the years. And so, they've agreed to remain accepting our recycled material until our long-term solution is put into place. So, until that time, we'll continue to recycle about 1/3 of the materials that we collect, until our long-term solution is up and running, so to say. So, Republic Services is building their MRF in the north part of, well, north of Mesa, at the Salt River landfill. They're supposed to complete that by spring of 2023, and the initial term with them will be a five-year term with renewal options. That'll take us another five years. At the time that Republic Services MRF is built, and we start taking materials to them, we'll be able to increase our material recycle from 30% materials collected recycle to 70% materials collected recycle. On the next page, I have a map that's gonna show you the location of these facilities. So, on the very north part of this map, that is where the MRF is located that's being built. Once that is built, Republic Services will be our only option for recycled materials. They do have a location down south and west on that map, the Germain Transfer Station. It is quite a far distance from the boundaries of Mesa. That is an option, once the MRF opens, for us to take materials there, but it is, it is, it is far from Mesa. The other option is Mesa Transfer Station in the southeast, but it is not an option today. So, they indicated that in the years to come, that they would look at upgrading that to be able to accept recycled materials, but it is not something that's gonna happen when the MRF opens. We did talk to them about accelerating that. They did say that they would do that, but we have no timeline on that and no pricing on that. So, again, when the MRF is built in spring of 2023, that will be our only recycling option. In addition to that, the pricing for this, our short-term option with United Fibers will be $30 a ton. And the long-term option with Republic Services, we have budgeted $45 a net turn, a net ton for that recycling at the MRF. And then, what I also wanted to point out was that, on the map, we only have, talking about the map, we only have one vendor with Republic. And so, we need to continue to, if something happens to that option, we really need to continue and further our efforts to work on the future possibilities with the Town of Gilbert, with the MRF and transfer station. So, we continue to work on that, and after the first of the year, we'll be coming back to you with an update on that. And that'll be a 15% conceptual design. So, we'll come back to you with that after the first of the year. And then, the next slide just shows you that the materials that we currently collect today and advertise will remain the same with these new contracts. They will not change. So, nothing, so they'll still accept everything that we accept today. And with that, do you have any questions?
So, am I understanding this correctly? Thank you for your presentation. So, currently, all of the recyclable, recyclables that you collect, you're only able, because of space, to do 30%?
Mayor, sorry. Mayor, Councilmember Pillsbury, yes. So, the facility capacity can only accept that, as well as operationally, that's all we can move there because of the location of the facility.
Okay. And then, so you dump the other 70% into the regular landfill?
We do.
Okay. So, when people ask questions about that, that, okay. And so, we would only be able to, even with our long-term solution, do 70%, and then dump the other 30%?
That is correct. And we maximize everything we can to recycling facilities. But again, with being left with one vendor and one location, operationally, it's very difficult to move all that material with the resources and leaving us with one facility.
And what about, I don't remember what you guys call it, but where there's stuff in there that can't be recycled? So, what do you guys call it?
Contamination.
Contam, yeah, contaminated. So, is any of that happening before we take it, or that's where it's found out? Like, so, could some of that 30% be contaminated and not be recycled either, right?
Yes, it could. It's, it's once it gets to the facility, the contamination.
Probably less than 30% is actually being recycled.
It is being delivered at the facility, correct, and the contamination is pulled out.
And then, when you were talking, on the map, when you were talking about that we need to look to the future with Mesa and Gilbert, is that the star, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, the star on the south part of that map, yes. And then, on the northeast part, that blue, that purple dot, that would be a transfer station at the East Mesa Service Center.
And is there currently anything at those right now? They're just?
For solid waste, there's currently, or solid waste and recycling, there's currently nothing at either of those sites.
But the plan would be to eventually?
Well, we have a strong presence at the East Mesa Service Center. We just don't have a transfer station.
Correct.
So, we've got facilities out there. We own the property at Pecos and Sauson. Matter of fact, we just sold off a portion of that for the rail.
Pirate.
Pirates, for the pirate. Please don't know what that means. For the rail. And so, we saw, we have enough land down there, and that's why we've had discussions with Gilbert, because obviously, it's closer, it's pretty close to their boundaries.
Right.
So, there, we've invited them to be part of the process. I think they're going to their new council sometime at the beginning of the year. You can see our vulnerabilities, right? We haven't improved significantly. We won't, we're gonna end up with one vendor, going back to the same location that burned down and created, you know, the, you know, we've eliminated the whole thing. So, what we hope to do is continue for these five, three to five years. And while that's happening, we're gonna keep coming to council, looking at the feasibility of us taking, you know, looking at developing these sites, the purple, what are, octagon, or whatever that is, and the, is it a pentagon?
Hexagon.
Hexagon, and the star.
Okay. And so, the Germain Transfer Station, we could use, but it just wouldn't make sense with all the gas it would take to get there, right?
That's correct. And in addition to that, they would essentially just transfer it up north to the MRF, and it's almost $30 more a ton to have them do that. So, on top of the transportation, there's a significant cost to that.
And then, so, United Fibers is just limited in their capacity? Is that, I mean, did they even respond to the RFP or anything? Like, could they handle the capacity of more?
They cannot handle the capacity of more. They are at capacity. They did respond to the RFP, yes, and they, they essentially can continue to take what they're taking now, but no more.
Okay. So, I mean, even if we wanted to recycle 100% in our city, we just couldn't. There's just not the capacity.
There's not, there's not someone who can take it for us right now. That's why we wanna move in that direction.
Okay.
Other questions, Council? Vice Mayor?
So, the, the new property that we're proposing, the Mesa property, Pecos-Sauson Man Transfer Station MRF, that would be the, a city-owned or in collaboration with Gilbert, a co-owned facility, right? It's not?
That's the current concept, yes.
Yeah, okay. So, then, we own that facility, and then, do we go to market with those materials, or do we use an intermediary?
So, I would just give the example, why don't you give the example of Phoenix does? Because Phoenix owns one, but how do they operate? How does that operate?
Yeah. Vice Mayor and Mayor. So, Phoenix is an example. They have two material recycling facilities. What they do is contract out the operation of those facilities, and that includes a broker who actually will broker those materials. So, in the case, you have several different options, but you can contract out the operations, and then we can contract out a broker. Or if it's something that you would want city to run the operations, and we can contract out a broker. Generally, we're not in the, you know, business of brokering materials, but that's your options.
I was just wondering, is there a cost savings for us having this MRF instead of, even, I know we have capacity issues, and that's why we're doing this. But, and when we look at the tonnage rate, would that be expected to be within this range, or more, less?
That's why we want to find out, right? That's what we're trying to, those are great questions that, that's why we're going through the process, the feasibility study, how much would it cost to operate, how much would it cost to bring, so it operated for us, and getting long-term contracts to do that. And I suspect, you know, again, Salt River's at the north end, this is at the south end, so we would probably want to use both, if we could, right? The idea is to try to go from 30% to something much more than that over time.
Yeah. And I know we've had the conversation before, but I know in the city of Phoenix, they are doing some circular economy-type things, of having some micro factories and using plastic that's making blocks for building or furniture, exploring entrepreneurial opportunities right next to the MRF, so that we wouldn't even have to take it to market. We could actually make a product there. I think there'll be a lot more going on with the demand, and hopefully, we can, in our feasibility, look at opportunities where we could have property to invite that to the area. Thank you.
Mr. Reddian?
On the, the top, the West Mesa and East Mesa, are those also considered to?
Not, not for the MRF, for the, that's just where, that's just where the, that's where the crews go, start from right now, right?
Correct.
So. Oh, they start?
Yeah, now, we're trying to split the operations. This is Sherry's favorite thing, is we're gonna split the operations and have presence on the west and the east side. But that's just where the, that's where the trucks are, that's where they report, that's where they drive out, that's where they're being maintained. That's just showing more, just kind of our presence. It has, but it also kind of shows, again, after they get their load, that's recycling, they've gotta go, well, eventually go north, or they have to go south.
Wow. So, you, you mentioned the possibility of actually also having the need for the Salt River one, right, because of the distance from the West Mesa?
I think so, yeah.
Correct, yes. Mayor, Councilmember Reddian, yes. So, we would still, you know, we would still direct haul to the MRF, just because a lot of the north, north portions of Mesa, especially in northwest, direct hauling would be the best option. So, yes, the, the idea would be that we would still direct haul there, and then we would have our other facilities.
Okay. So, you'd have a north presence and a south presence. That's what we're trying to get to.
Is there models to have, like, having smaller, maybe not MRFs, but it, it wouldn't be landfill stuff, but recycling that are, recycling centers that are smaller, and then taking it to a larger MRF, per se? So, having maybe the West Mesa be a smaller site where stuff is collected? And is there models out there that are, are not maybe MRF-style, but it, it, there's multiple, multiple sites out there that are collecting at least recycling materials and then processing a larger MRF?
Yeah, Councilmember Reddian, Mayor. In 2019, we did do a study with ASU on different options, including a full-size MRF and a transfer station, an option with a partnership with Phoenix. And then, we looked at the option of mini-MRFs. So, mini-MRFs would be spread throughout the.
Mini-MRFs.
Yes.
That's what you're looking for.
That's what I was, that's what you're trying to say. Mini-MRFs.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So, we did look at those as different options. The problem is that we have such a high quantity of materials that it, it didn't make sense financially for us to, to put several different mini-MRFs throughout the city. It also requires a significant more amount of labor versus more automated with a larger MRF.
All right, this is on the agenda, just for information, Mr. Brady, or do you need us to?
There's an item, the contracts for the new series are on the agenda for the 8th.
For the 8th, okay.
Yeah, so we just took the opportunity to present that and just kind of talk about the future here.
All right. Any other questions, Council? Thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on our agenda, item 3 is to approve executive session minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Mr. Thompson and Vice Mayor. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you. That passes unanimously. Item 4 is to acknowledge receipt of various meeting minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Ms. Pillsbury, seconded by Mr. Freeman. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That passes unanimously. Item 5 is current events and conferences attended. Council members, have anything you'd like to share with us?
Wow, we'll go.
I'm sure, I'm guessing we do. Mr. Freeman?
Yeah, so this Saturday, I'll have a get-together at the Mesa Historical Museum. If you want to come at noon, we'll have some good food and be able to visit the museum from starting at noon. So, come for Jalapeno Bucks food.
Oh, you got me. All right, yeah. All right. Other meetings, conferences attended? Vice Mayor?
Well, I have to mention that the day after Thanksgiving, we opened Mary Main Street on McDonald with the Christmas tree and Santa, and someone gave Santa a ride in a firetruck, so thank you for that. And we have the ice skating rink open and a lot of activities, the roaming gnome. And if you find it in the windows in downtown, there's prizes for that. This Saturday, there is the Downtown Mesa Reindeer Roll and Stroll. It's City of Mesa's bicycle and pedestrian program for a self-guided tour through Roll and Stroll, and there are a treasure hunt and prizes there. Of course, the temple has its lights in its glory, and it's beautiful. The first time it's been open with the Christmas lights in five years after the renovation. The light rail is available to use without a fee, so you can traverse from one end of downtown to the other between Country Club and Gilbert Road. So, please just find a place to park and then jump on the rail to go to all these great places to enjoy the holidays all the way through January 5th or 7th. Anyway, the first week of January, January 7th. This week, I went to an Asian District and Broadway Corridor meeting, talking to the businesses along the Broadway Corridor and in the PD programs and the Asian District mural programs. We met Evette. That was very good. Yesterday, I met with the British Consul General from LA at Falcon Field, and we discussed Sister City opportunity, looking for that connection in the UK, as well as some other relationships and related to the Royal Air Force. Oh, I should have left that for you. That's your district. I was there, and I'm talking about it as your district. I also attended a luncheon with the Swiss US Ambassador that was held at SRP, talking about the ways that they use water, they're major suppliers of water for the Europe, for Europe, with all their glaciers and rivers and such, and talking about how they manage that. They're also looking at US investment opportunities, and skilled workforce is a big part of that. This afternoon, Canyon Vista Recovery Center opened a new facility, a north center, for recovering from substance abuse and such. I'm glad to have them near downtown. And Newberry Station, which is a co-working space, opened up. We just, right before our council meeting, is a beautiful area. I don't remember the address, but it was between McDonald and Robson on the north side, and has the zigzag. It used to be Newberries, if you remember back to your history of Mesa. And I love that they kept the Newberry Station there, in hopes of having a soda ice cream station, and it's available for their tenants who rent there, but also hourly for meetings and beautiful offices and conference areas and such. So, check it out. Thank you.
Great, great job. Council, anything else you'd like to share with us? All right, I know we're running short on time. We need to get upstairs. Mr. Brady, what is our, you're running out of meetings to tell us about for the rest of the year.
See you next Thursday.
All right. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn here, Council? Thank you, Mr. Luna and Mr. Thompson. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. We will reconvene upstairs in five minutes.